Good morning. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Brookings County Commission meeting this morning, Tuesday, April 2nd, 2024. I would like to start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Would everybody please stand? Item number three on the agenda is invitation for citizens to schedule time on the commission agenda for an item not listed. There's a five-minute time limit per person. Anyone wishing to speak during this agenda item must sign in prior to the start of the meeting. No commission action will be taken during this agenda item. Any requested action item may be scheduled for a future meeting. Today, we do not have anybody signed in. Let's move on to item number four, approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any additions, corrections, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion carried. Item number five is consent agenda items. It includes the minutes, travel and education requests, personnel action notices, cellular authorizations, and human services report. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any comments? Any questions? Call the roll, please.
Hostler.
Aye.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Routine business, approval of claims. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any additions, comments? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item B, Department Head Reports, BCOAC. Dustin.
Morning, everybody.
Morning.
So I just want to start off by saying, I think everybody's well aware, but I put in my, my letter of resignation and my last day will be April 26th. Just wanted to thank you all for the opportunity. It's been a great place to work and I've, I've enjoyed it, enjoyed it over the last four years. But just wanted to give you guys a report of kind of everything and everything I've been working on, hopefully transition the new person in with just everything that we've done and maintenance and all that kind of stuff. But I'll start off with attendance. So one thing we did do, we gave you attendance report for the last two years, 2022 and 2023, and we take attendance for all the little meetings. And I know I give you guys the, the attendance numbers for our ranges, but never the meetings that we do. So in 2022, we actually had 12,021 people come out and use the facility. This isn't everybody, like we get people in off the bike path and stuff like that to use the facilities, which is great. And then in 2023, we actually had 14,805. Attendance numbers for just this year thus far for the ranges, we've had 1,140 use the gun range and 531 use the archery range. Events and building usage, we've had 176 events this year. One of the bigger events that we've been working on is a running shoot with the Joe Ed group that uses the facility. With the weather coming in, we were down eight archers this year and down about 20 people coming in as, as far as the plus ones and all that kind of stuff. But they had 100 archers and about 180 people in to watch. They actually reached out to the Cub Scouts and they ran a little concession stand and then they had a barbecue place here in town set up shop and our concession stand and sell pulled pork and that kind of stuff. So I've put some pictures in there if you guys are interested in looking at those of the event and how it went and how we kind of set everything up. We're also working on the Welcome to Summer event. Marty actually brought this up in a board meeting a couple of years ago and it went very good last year. This is just to give kids and families the opportunity to come out and see the facility and then we invite other clubs to come out and set up a table and just kind of advertise what they have to offer for families to do in the summer. And it went over very well last year and we're looking at doing this May 15th from three to seven again. Two more groups in town that have come out and used the facility. One is the Activity Center. It's a 55-plus center for people. I know they eat and they have a pool table and everything. I think it's just right across the street, but they've come out and they're going to shoot archery, try to do it once a month just for a fun activity. And we also have advance booked every week for like the next three months. They're going to bring out some individuals and shoot archery. So that's pretty cool. I've also included the updates since I started, just anything we've done at the building, kind of contracts and preventative maintenance and maintenance we've done on HVAC units and all the remodel stuff. So you guys have that. Train, we got two years left in the preventative maintenance contract and then our printer, we got another year. So that's coming up here on a lease, but I, all that's in, in the pages that I submitted. We did receive money for the filters for our 2024 grant. The floor just got sealed on Sunday on Easter. They came in and resealed that gun range floor. Those were the two things we asked for money for from Game Fisher Parks. So we have money for the filters, but I'll, I'll try to submit all that stuff and get that buttoned up before I leave to get that reimbursed for resealing the gun range floor. I've also submitted the grant, kind of the status on our grant that we applied for, for 2025. It passed the first round out in Pierre, but now it goes to the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service of Federal Assistance in Denver. And usually you guys find out in September if we get that or not. Maintenance, we just got all brand-new LED lights in the building. It looks great, looks clean, looks brand-new. So those should be good for 10 to 15 years. You shouldn't have to worry about that. Fire alarms for Banco have been expect, inspected this year, so those are good. The berm, you should have two to three, maybe four more years depending on usages on that because we just got that done a year ago. Ordering supplies, I've ordered custodial supplies and ammo and just for the next person's easy transition. Even all the little bow parts and stuff that are replaced on the bows that we have in-house. Got a little attic stock of that. The archery range, we replaced all the new fronts on the, on the buttresses. If we keep doing that, those should last a good five to six years. Also put new tape lines down. So everything should be good there. Couple projects, we did, the Advisory Board Committee out there approved us to get 75 new banquet chairs. So that order has been placed and hopefully they show up here in the next month and get those put away and get into our inventory. And then just whatever, the painting and that kind of stuff, that's budgeted. The little utility room, we're working on that right now. Hopefully I get that done before the 26th as well. I've reached out to Game Fisher Parks, let them know that I'm leaving. We want to continue our relationship with them. They love the facility, but we've done 18 activities with the two interns. Currently, we have two guns at Stern Custom, Custom Gunsmithing, just so you guys are aware. But I'm going to try to get, I'll call him and see if I can't get those back and put in inventory before I leave as well. So everything's, everything's there. Other than that, just been letting customers and reps and all that know that I'm leaving and there'll be a new person. But anything else for me at all?
Dustin, I just want to thank you for all your hard work and dedication.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you.
I'll echo that as well.
Thanks.
Yes, it's, I know you got to move on and do what's right for you. We'd just hate to see you go, but thank you.
Thanks again.
Good morning.
Morning.
I did send out a there's a flood plain management class in Aberdeen, April 23 and 24. Richard went to this particular class a year or two ago up in Watertown. So I will probably end up going to, to the one in Aberdeen. American Red Cross contacted my office requesting to store the Red Cross trailer at the County Highway Shop. I went through the County Highway Superintendent and the Commission Department to get permission. So we will store it at the County Highway Shop. I explained the procedures to the American Red Cross that they would have to call the non-emergency 911 line to, to get in contact or someone to open the, the gate for them, that we're not going to give them a key to, to the facility. I've got a presentation to the local Kiwanis Club on April the 4th, which is Thursday. And next week, we have got a county fire meeting and I believe if I'm not mistaken, the last time we had a red flag warning, the question came up is, do we have an ordinance in place to automatically ban burning during a red flag event? And we do not. Lake County does. Typically, what happens in Brookings County when, when there was a burn ban on, the sheriff or myself contacts the local fire, county fire group and they make a determination, do they, or a recommendation if the county commission puts a burn ban on or not. Is the red flag ordinance something that the commission would like for me to at least approach the county fire people about or just let it ride like we got now?
Input from?
You said Lake County has one. Is there any other counties surrounding us?
I guess I haven't researched other counties. It just, we had that red flag come up and I, I noticed that Lake County put, put it out there during a burn ban. I believe Yankton County does too, if I'm not mistaken.
You, you think that might confuse people more, Bob, or?
Well, that I don't know. I mean, with Lake County having it, it might, might be easier. But I, I do believe the county fire chiefs need to have a say in the matter on whether we do it or not. So I'd like to at least approach them with the, with the suggestion and, and see what their feelings are before I bring it to you and bring it back to you, if that's all right with the commission.
I think you probably, I mean, have that conversation with them. I think it'd be a good conversation, even if it doesn't go anywhere.
Very good. Thank you.
I don't have a whole lot to update on. We're working on crack sealing while we can. Little bit of snow removal here this last couple of weeks as winters kind of set back in on us. Aside from that, just, you guys got any questions?
The only question I, what status on 214th Street? Have you heard anything from the state or what, what's the process?
From the last email I received from Stacy regarding that resolution, I did send that onto Larry Dean with the South Dakota Department of Transportation. I have not heard back yet. I am assuming that's something that needs to be addressed by the Transportation Commission. I know that it was, they met the last time was before that meeting. So I'm assuming that that's something that he'll get back to me on. I have yet not heard back from him, but I will reach out and contact to see where that status is at.
That has to be approved before we do any maintenance on the stretch of road then?
I'm assuming so.
Okay. I was, I was wondering if we could make sure the township knows that. Been getting some questions why we're not out there. I think that needs to be clarified. Once the state approves it, then we'll be able to.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thanks.
Marty? Nothing. Misty? Okay. Moving on to moving on to, we don't have any scheduled agenda items. Moving on to regular business. Item A is Action to Approve Resolution Number 24-14, a resolution proclaiming April 15th through the 19th of 2024 National Work Zone Awareness Week in Brookings County. Do I have motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any comments? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Hostler.
Aye.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item B, Action to Approve Agreement Number 24-43, An Application for Occupancy of the Right-of-Way of County Highways Made by Sioux Valley Energy and Bangor Township. Do I have motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any comments?
This is a, this is a, a overhead and underground north of Sinia and, Sinia on County Road 11. This work will take place later this, this year. Just for some replacements and upgrades to, from single phase to three phase.
Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion carried. Item C, Action to Approve Agreement Number 24-44, An Agreement for Voluntary Right-of-Way Donation Between Brookings County and Don and Janice Womack Executive's Trust. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Comments?
This is a structure located approximately seven miles north of Elkton. The structure number is 06320118. It is a structure that Brookings County was awarded a grant for in 2022 at approximately 80% state cost, 20% county cost, roughly right around that $800,000 mark. Obviously, we got to go to bid on it to know what the exact cost is going to be for the structure, but these two following per, or right-of-way voluntary use for permanent and temporary easements to complete the construction of this structure.
Any questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion carried. Item D, Action to Approve Agreement Number 24-45, An Agreement for Voluntary Right-of-Way Donation Between Brookings County and Joe and Leslie Cuck. Do I have motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. And this is the same structure, I believe. Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion carried. Item E is Action to Approve Agreement Number 24-46, An Agreement Between Brookings County and the Road Guide Construction Company, Inc. for the 2024 Brookings County Chip Seal Project. Do I have motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Comments from the highway? This is pretty straightforward. Leave the same contractor we had last year.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item F, Action to Approve Agreement Number 24-47, A State of South Dakota County Contract for Provision of Community Health Services Between Brookings County and the South Dakota Department of Health, Family and Community Health, Child and Family Services. Do I have motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any comments?
This contract has not changed from last year. The amount hasn't changed. Kind of the provisions for, you know, what is expected from the county really haven't changed. So I'm recommending approval on this.
Okay. Any questions? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Hostler.
Aye.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item DG, Action to Approve Agreement Number 24-48, A State of South Dakota Department of Transportation Joint Powers Agreement for the Pocket Gopher Abating Services. Do I have motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any comments?
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is something that we department does every year. I'm just looking for your direction and you're okay to submit the contract.
Questions for Misty? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Action to Approve Abatement Number 24-17, An Abatement Application Made by Brookings Edgebrook Apartments for Parcel Number 40582-00500-000-00 in the amount of $57,276.42. Do I have motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Comments? Jacob?
Yeah, all the abatements in front of you today are dealing with the same issue. There was a legislative rewrite of South Dakota Codeified Law 106137.1. Specifically, the law changed in the way that we assess partial complete constructions, partial complete construction on apartment properties. In the past, we had assessed the property as it stood on November 1st. If it was 50% complete, we would assess it as such and they would pay tax on the 50% complete building the following year. The rewrite specifically states that during construction, the assessed value of the property may not exceed the property's assessed value in the year preceding the start of construction, meaning we can't assess the apartment until it's fully complete and then it goes on the discretionary formula. That rewrite was, it was an oversight by our office. We assessed seven properties at partial complete as they stood on November 1st of '22. The abatements are correcting the taxes that were levied on those partial complete structures. We've already taken it a step further and corrected the 2024 assessed values at the local Board of Equalization on any apartment structures that were partial complete on November 1 of '23 for '24's assessment. You know, this, this law has a little bit of a loophole in it, maybe needs to be closed up, you know, coming up in the next legislative session. But as it reads right now, this is the way that we can correct our oversight on that. So the, the Brookings City Council, being all these properties are in Brookings City, the city council has approved these abatements and I would recommend approval as well.
Any questions for Jacob? If you could clarify, say a complex, apartment complex is being built and 50% of the apartments are complete but not usable yet. Is that tied on how?
Well, as the construction process carries forward, I mean, we might show up on November 1st and have a building permit for a 40-unit apartment complex and they might be done through interior drywall. You know, at that point in time, they're not making any income on the property, but prior to this law rewrite, we would assess that property at 50% complete construction for that year. The way the rewrite reads is we may not assess that property until it's 100% complete. So until it's, you know, closed up and being rented and they're making income on the property, that's the point in time and we can put that on the assessment rolls and then apply the discretionary formula tax reduction as well.
Any further comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion carried. Item J, Action to Approve Abatement Number 24-19, An Abatement Application Made by Flats at Neil Park LLC for Parcel Number 404.
I think we skipped one. We skipped I.
Oops, sorry.
There's two that are flats. Yeah, but I think you skipped down.
Item I, sorry, back up. Action to Approve Abatement Number 24-18, An Abatement Application Made by Flats of Neil Park LLC for Parcel Number 40473-01900-002-00 in the amount of $17,395.31. Do I have motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion carried. Item J, Action to Approve Abatement Number 24-19, An Abatement Application Made by Flats at Neil Park LLC for Parcel Number 40473-02000-000-05 in the amount of $24,357.59. Do I have motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion carried. Item K, Action to Approve Abatement Number 24-20, An Abatement Application Made by Blue Gill Incorporated for Parcel Number 40582-00300-001-00 in the amount of $5,067.80. Do I have motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion carried. Item L, Action to Approve Abatement Number 24-21, An Abatement Application Made by VV Properties LLC for Parcel Number 40582-00300-006-00 in the amount of $5,590.68. Do I have motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion carried. Item M, Action to Approve Abatement Number 24-22, An Abatement Application Made by VK Properties LLC for Parcel Number 40582-00300-007-00 in the amount of $2,748.92. Do I have motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any no comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion carried. Item N, An Action to Approve Abatement Number 24-23, An Abatement Application Made by Reserve RE45. an abatement application made by Reserve, R.E. forty-five LLC for parcel number four-zero-five-zero-one dash zero-zero-two-zero-zero dash zero-zero-zero dash zero-zero in the amount of eleven thousand, eight-hundred-and-sixteen dollars and thirty-nine cents. Do I have a motion to approve?
Still moved. Second.
Have motion to second. No further comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull same sign. Motion carried. Moving on to item number O. Action approve request to fill vacancy for an office manager in the Highway Department. Do I have motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Have motion to second. Any comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull same sign. Motion carried. Item P, action approve, a request to fill vacancy for the Director of the Brookings County Outdoor Adventure Center. Do I have motion to approve?
Still moved. Second.
Have a motion to the second. Any questions, comments? Hearing none?
One thing I was going to mention in my report, budgets are due the twenty-ninth, but I'll have it done before I leave. And I know the board has already kind of approved it, the advisory board. So I just wanted to tell you guys that too.
Any other comments? Hearing none. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull same sign. Motion carried. Item number nine, Commission Department Director's Report.
There is a petition, I believe that was included in my report for, yes, the Prairie Nightingale Springs Social being held at the ambulance station and education center. There is an RSVP requirement for that. I don't know if you know now that you plan to attend, you can let me know. Otherwise, this will be, I think, RSVP. Yeah, it's actually right before, the day before our next meeting. So I will need to know before our next meeting. Kelly, yes? Want to go? Yeah?
Yeah.
And then also in my notes, we have a couple of NACO meetings coming up. The WEAR Western Interstate Region Conference is coming up next month in May. That's out in California. And the National Convention is in July in Tampa, Florida. So if anyone is interested in those, you don't have to let me know right now. But if you are, come in and visit with me, and we can, we can kind of look at that and into, in more detail. Other than that, just some items coming up. This Thursday is the Taste of Brookings Annual Celebration at the Chambers Event at five o'clock, Club Seventy-One at SDSU. I think you've registered next Thursday. I registered most of you for the First Bank and Trust Focus Event. That's at eight AM, again at Club Seventy-One. And then just, we were just talking about that, April twenty-second, the Prairie Nightingale Springs Social and Tour. April thirtieth, which is a Tuesday, the Brookings County Annual Feed. We did get information on that at the East Fire Hall here in town. May first, the Walk a Mile in Our Shoes fundraiser. I haven't seen anything else quite yet on that, so I'll kind of continue to keep you posted there. But there were a couple other things that did come up. On May seventh, it's a Tuesday, is the groundbreaking for the Ivy Center, Brookings Behavioral Health and Wellness, at four o'clock. It will be at their, at that location, their current location. So May seventh at four o'clock, the Ivy Center groundbreaking. And then we did send some things out about budget hearings, tentatively here June nineteenth. And that's kind of all day, eight-thirty to five o'clock, to get added to your schedules. Other than that, that's all I've got, unless you have questions for me.
Any other questions? Thank you. Attorney's Office Report.
Yeah, I had Stacy attach the... So this money is as a result of the national opioid settlement. This was something Brookings County had signed on to be a party of. So there's numerous counties and municipalities across South Dakota and the country that has received this money. What you see here is a portion of that. Since I had sent this in, we received an additional thirty-one hundred dollars from various other settlements, all kind of related to the opioid epidemic. So last year, as you, some of the commissioners may recall, we had given this money to the Brookings County Drug Court. And then I think Judge Howard, as well as Joan Nettinga, she's the Drug Court Coordinator, she had come in and given a presentation, if you guys recall that, as to how this money would be used. One of the kind of stipulations, it's not, there's not real strong strings attached to this money, but one of the things that they encourage these government entities that are receiving this money is to try to use it towards those that are, you know, suffering from substance abuse addiction. So because Brookings County directly benefits from the Drug Court, as well as the DUI court now, I thought it would be a good place to give this money to those courts. It's not a large, large chunk of money. So it would be this amount plus the fifteen hundred, as well as the thirty-one hundred. If you guys think that's too much, that's fine. Just, I would request the commission approve at least a portion of these funds to be payable to those two courts, because they do make a difference. And there's numerous participants now in both of those programs. And they really appreciate these funds, because it goes towards purchasing incentives, as well as supporting some of the other resources that go into that, so.
Any recommendations for the board? Comments?
I think it'd probably be a good use of the funds.
Daniel, you had two court systems there. Which would you recommend splitting it, or?
Yeah, so... Courts, it's run out of the same account. It's the same drug court team and coordinator that runs both courts. And so just giving it to both the Drug Court and the DUI Court would be, would be fine. And then they can divvy it up as they see fit.
Stacy, you have a total on that?
I don't know the amount of the third, the third check.
Yeah, the third check is, it was thirty-one hundred.
Even?
Uh, no. It was, it was three thousand, ninety-nine and like eighty-nine cents. I can get that exact figure too.
I would bring this forward at a later, at probably the next meeting as an auto, automatic supplement once we get this money actually received in. And then, yeah, could take action on it at that point. But if you're giving us that direction, we can make that happen.
Good question, Commissioner Vanderwall.
Is this something that we're going to, we can seek again next year? Or is this the ends of these types of?
Yeah, so I talked to the Department of Social Services. So they're the ones that are sort of receiving it, and then they disperse it out to all these counties and cities. And I asked her that too, and she said that, so like, the money comes in on a rolling basis when the settlements are starting to like finalize. And so there's other lawsuits out there that haven't been settled yet. And so it's hard for them to like forecast a number. Some of the checks that we received, they're like, you know, from CVS, Walgreens, Walmart. So they went after some of these larger corporations. Those have settled, and then everybody gets a fraction of that. So like I said, as those cases settle, there may or may not be more money coming in at a later time, so.
I think we got a general consensus that be put in that account at a later date.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
No.
Item number eleven, Commissioner reports and discussion items. Commissioner Vanderwall.
Thank you. The last couple of weeks is pretty... I went on the Sioux Valley Electric meeting in Voga, and this upcoming week looks to be busier. Thank you.
Commissioner Hostler.
At the... Word Dustin did, tenders resignation. And just again want to reemphasize, thank him for all his hard work and dedication and bring the Outdoor Adventure Center where it is today, and wish him luck on his future endeavors. On the twenty-seventh, attended the Brookings Economic Development Corporation Board Meeting. And on the twenty-eighth, Domestic Abuse Shelter Board Meeting.
Okay, thank you. On the twenty-second... It was had by all. It was great to see the people get together, socialize. On the twenty-fifth, attended the BCOAC Advisory Board Meeting along with Commissioner Hostler. Like I said, thank you to Dustin and good luck in the future. The twenty-sixth, attended the Strategic Planning Meeting along with the other entities within the city. Got a good update from SDSU and the hospital and the city. And everything's looking good for the upcoming season here. We had, I think we were represented well at the meeting. And it's a very good meeting to go to, and you can gain some knowledge and clarify some items with some of the other entities in the community, so. Moving on, item number twelve is executive session in accordance with South Dakota Codified Law one-twenty-five dash two, parentheses one. Do I have motion to enter into executive session?
Still moved. Second.
Have motion to second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull same sign. We are entering into executive session.